All right, good evening, everyone. It is 6:32 on Monday, April 1st. This is a regular city council meeting at Arlington City Council. I'm Mayor Rich Nagel. I'll be presiding at the meeting. I'll call the meeting to order, and would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll have a real call. Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Here.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Here.
Four members present. Councilmember Hattlestead is feeling better, thankfully, but he is out on a... Attending a funeral in North Dakota. A close friend of his, so he will not be with us this evening. Also at the table, on my left, is City Administrator Pat Melvin. On my right, City Attorney Ross Arnison. Joining us tonight, Howard Brinkman. Howie, welcome. Jeff Matts. Jeff, how you doing?
Good.
Kirby Wickworth, Kathy Homme, representing the library, and Kurt Mank, representing the Arlington enterprise. So, with that out of the way, we will go into the agenda. Is there any change? I do have a few changes in the agenda. I'll list mine first, and if anyone else has, we will cross off Item C on... Under consent agenda. That we will take up at a later date. Okay, and then on page two, Item 9, Historical Society Report. Actually, that is just an update on their recent meeting. We'll just move that to 14C, down towards the bottom. So, any other changes in the agenda? Hearing none. Motion is in order to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion to approve agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Yashewski, to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. Then we'll move into the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening consists of the following. Item A, approval of the January 7th, 2019 city council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the March 4th, 2019 city council meeting minutes. And then be Item C, approval of the bills. And Item D, approval of the Raceway Ambulance Service Agreement. Okay?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Highland, second by Councilmember Yashewski, to approve the consent agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion's carried. And tonight, I will be saying, "Motion carried." That means if it's unanimous, it's four to nothing. I will not repeat the one absent, but for the meeting... For the minute purposes, any vote that's taken tonight will have the one absent at the end, even if I don't say it. Okay. Anyone wishing to address the council at this time?
Yeah.
Howie, come forward, please. There's a mic there. You may need to push the button.
Button.
Should be getting used to it.
Yeah. I don't want to either. That's what it is. Well, I'm here to ask you guys about this street project at Clinton Street. Now, what I was told is that the sidewalk is gonna go on the south side. But now that I look at this diagram that we got here, it looks like the sidewalk is gonna go on the north side. So, what is what?
It is the south side, last I heard.
South, yeah.
Evidently, maybe that's...
I always heard south side.
I don't know if they...
What is the reason the south side and not the north?
Trees, I think, was the issue with fewer trees would be taken down on the south side to make room for the...
Well, we went down and counted on both sides, and there's probably about the same amount.
Uh-huh.
Why aren't we putting sidewalk on both sides? We got not even a block and a half away. The sidewalks are on both sides of the street anyway. Why ain't we just doing it all the way down through?
Why... Are you asking a question why they're not on both sides of the street?
Well, if you go down the street, just a block and a half, not even that far down, there's sidewalks on both sides of the street.
Yeah.
Why ain't we just taking it all the way down to... By Bergerson's and down that way?
I think the intent is not to have more sidewalks, but to have them strategically placed so that they would have access to a sidewalk. If they have to cross the street, so be it. They have to cross the street, but they still have access to a sidewalk because, obviously, having sidewalks on both sides of the street is more expensive.
I understand that, but what I'd like to know is... I called your engineer and stuff, but he could never give me of why they're putting it on the south side instead of not the north side, so...
He told us trees, so that was... I don't know if there was more mature trees that he had to deal with on one side versus the other.
Okay, well, I know if they go on my side of the street, I don't want my trees taken down. That's my thing. If we're a pretty... A city of trees... Because, like I said, if you go down and count trees, I think it's pretty close on what side's what, so... On my side, over my side, I got a... We got a hill there, so...
Uh-huh.
Are we gonna have to take a lot more dirt out of there?
Well, elevations are gonna change. You know, the street isn't gonna be the same... Exactly the same elevation.
I understand that. Yeah, I understand all that.
So...
If we're only gonna do it on one side, I wish they would've came and talked to all the property owners. There's not that many here. Because I got a Roger from... A letter from Roger and Barb across the street opposing it too. And I know some of the other ones, too, are opposing it on our side, so...
Now, there was an open house. I don't know, were you able to attend the open house?
No. That's what your engineer said, too. And you know what? Life is life.
Yeah.
Sometimes you can't make the project.
Yeah, no.
That's why I called him. You know, that's why I talked to him about it and stuff like this, so... You know, people can make meetings, but some can't, so... But if the engineer... I don't know if he can't change it or what the deal is now, but it'd be nice if we would've been notified, or at least they would've came and talked to us about it, since there's not that many people.
Okay. Okay.
I don't know if the engineer can get back to me, or...
I believe that you...
I talked to him, but it wasn't... Yeah, it wasn't... Yeah, I talked to him. It wasn't a good talk, so I don't know if he talked to me face to face, but it's like... You know, it's... I don't know about this. It's like, you guys... They do things and just don't ask people for their... What's going on? You guys gotta ask people about the situations, you know? It goes back to them renting thing, you know? There's nobody that asks anybody anything. They just sort of, "Here it is," you know? So, that's all I feel. It's... You gotta ask the people that live in this town that are paying the taxes.
When was that open house, do you remember?
I don't remember the date.
I can...
You couldn't make the meeting, understand that, but I think that was part of the thing to let the people know what was going on and show the...
Yeah, that's the purpose of it.
Show the diagrams.
We understand... I understand that. I understand it all, but it's...
I guess I'm concerned at that meeting or whatever, too, that we had the open house. If the map is what Howie has in front of him right now with the sidewalk being...
Because that's what it shows on this... I think it's...
On the north side rather than being on the south side, then I guess at that meeting, we weren't representing exactly what the project is. So, I understand that frustration.
The map you have there, is there a date on it? The one that chose the sidewalk on the north side? Down in the corner, maybe? You see a date?
No, no, I can't.
Okay.
I believe the date was...
Updated 12/13/18, since proposed subject project.
When was the open house?
I believe the open house was on January 22nd.
Yeah.
Prior to a city council meeting, so...
Yep, so that's... The map you have was the one originally sent out after they got done doing the surveying or whatever they had to do. Then they looked it over and decided it was better fit on the south side.
Okay.
That's why.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Uh-huh. All right, we'll move into announcements. Item number six.
First item is the Minnesota Valley Electric Cooperative meeting, which is scheduled for Tuesday, April 9th. If no council members are planning to attend, I will go ahead and send in our mail ballot, which has to be accepted by April 9th. I don't know if the council wishes to discuss the two members. We have Raymond E. Briggs from Prior Lake. First year as a Minnesota Valley Electric Cooperative member. We also have Gary Haberman, who's a current incumbent from Chan-Hassan. He's been a Minnesota Valley Electric Co-op member for 20 years, so...
Both are very qualified. One is a graduate of... The first Briggs is a graduate of the Air Force Academy, I think.
Correct.
Yep, yep.
Strong military background.
And then 20 years of service for the other gentleman.
So, if the council would like, you can certainly suggest who I send in our vote for. If that's something...
Makes no difference. I know... I don't know either one, so...
Right, yeah, I mean, I have...
You could flip a coin.
It'd just be drawing my name out of a hat for me, so it doesn't...
Yeah.
It's not fair.
I think use administrative judgment on that one.
The incumbent is a stronger candidate because he's been at it 20 years, or is it time for...
Time for a change? Give somebody else experience, huh? Yeah. That's another way to look at it.
So, if you're comfortable to just leave it up to me, I will look at it and make a judgment call.
If one is Irish, just vote for that one.
If only it was that easy, right? So... Okay. So, I will go ahead and get that completed and sent in so that Arlington has its input on who will be the new governing director for Minnesota Valley Electric Co-op. Thank you. The next item that I wanted to bring to your attention is a joint training exercise, which will be happening here on Wednesday, April 10th, here at the Community Center on the West Side Parking Lot at 7:00 PM. The Arlington Ambulance and the Fire Department will be working together and doing an auto extraction at 7:00 PM. So, I just wanted to invite any council members that would be willing to attend to come and see how staff works together well, and it would be a great opportunity to continue to build that relationship. So, again, Wednesday, April 10th at 7:00, here at the Community Center. The next item is the Ridgeview Sibley Medical Foundation Spring Benefit, which is scheduled for April 12th, here at the Arlington Community Center, beginning at 5:30. Proceeds from this will go to support Sibley Medical Center. Starts at 5:30 with a social hour. Dinner and auction is from 7:00 to 8:00. And then entertainment will follow. Duly noted, the dueling pianos will be playing. Tickets can be obtained at the Ridgeview Sibley locations, local businesses, and from various foundation members. So... Next item is the Magic of Aging, the Senior Expo, scheduled for Tuesday, April 16th, from 9:00 in the morning to 2:15 in the afternoon, here at the Arlington Community Center. The program will involve a number of craft vendors, different resource booths, as well as a variety of entertainment, including the Gary Tyson Comedy Variety Show, Amazing Hoopsters, Fall Prevention and Safety in Your Home, Medicare Update, different things, so... Tickets are available at GFW and SE Community Ed Offices, local senior centers, Morium Drug Store here in Arlington, Tooties in Henderson, and the Sibley County Extension Office. $10 for tickets in advance, $12 at the door. And again, that date is Tuesday, April 16th. The next item is the Fourth Annual Sibley Community and Business Expo, which is scheduled for Monday, April 22nd, at the Sibley East Commons, Elementary Commons. The hours will be from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. An opportunity to go and see different community and business groups that are working within Sibley County. I know that our ambulance will have a booth there along with Gaylord, so... We are not this year... We had some discussion about it. I think in the past, when they've had it here at the Community Center, we have had a booth. This year, we talked about it as a staff and concluded that time limitations prevent us from participating. So, hopefully, we can get back into it again next year. The next item is the Local Board of Appeal and Equalization Open Book Meeting, which is scheduled for Thursday, April 25th. This will be from 3:00 to 8:00 o'clock at the Sibley County Courthouse. So, individuals who have concerns about their property value are more than welcome to come to that meeting and have discussion with the appraiser and county assessors. The next item is the National Prescription Drug Takeback. The Arlington Police Department has done this previously quite successfully, and so they will be having another drug takeback scheduled for Saturday, April 27th, from 10:00 to 2:00 PM. And this will be located at the Arlington Police Department, 108 Fourth Avenue Northwest, here in Arlington. So, any drugs that you want to get rid of safely so that they aren't abused or used incorrectly, this will be the place to bring those. Next item is the Arlington Logo Design Contest. This is something that we talked about at our last council meeting. Included in your packet was a brief description. Deadline of May 15th, which was recommended by the council. And possible winner may be awarded $50 in Arlington Chamber dollars. So, we hope that individuals participate. And if you have the opportunity to encourage individuals, certainly hope that you will do so. The next and the last item under announcements today is the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference. This is scheduled for June 26th through June 28th. This will be held in Duluth. One of the best things for attending conferences is not just the course material, but being able to talk with other council members from other communities and find out what they're... If they're sharing some of the same challenges we are, or if they've got some great new initiatives. So, I would encourage you to take a look at the agenda, and if you would, please let us know if you plan to attend. I believe that there is early bird pricing deadlines. So, if you're going to get the early bird deal, you have to register prior to April 30th. So, if you would, please take a look at that and get back to administration as to whether or not you are interested in attending. That would be wonderful.
Okay. Any questions on any of the announcements? If not, we'll move right into communications.
The first item is just a letter from Centerpoint Energy. Basically, what the letter summarizes is that they want to reassure you that they are, during active flood season, taking proactive steps to make sure that everything is being contained. And if there are any emergencies that should occur, they are willing to certainly reach out and work with us to resolve problems. At the end of the letter, they've asked if any contact information has changed, that we should contact them. I was planning to reach out to this Jake Peranto and provide him with some updated information as to who our police chief is, our street supervisor, myself, and Mayor Nagel's contact information, should anything occur. I don't know how recently this has been updated, but I'll certainly make sure that we're up to date on that information.
Tim Hagenmiller would be another one to throw on that list.
Good point. Thank you, Michelle.
Yep.
Thank you.
And then, item B.
The second item is information that was shared by Minnesota Municipal Utilities Association. Just looking at 2018 in review. We are a member of MMUA, and as such, we benefit significantly. A lot of time and effort is put into lobbying and working with legislators to kind of protect the resource that we have in our electrical system. In addition, they do provide a lot of training for individuals who are working. We are fortunate in that we work with McLeod County, and they maintain a lot of it. But they are out there looking out for small cities, so... If you have time, please take time to review. One of the items that I came across and which they're dealing with right now from a legislative perspective is the power poles and the rights of cities to be exempt from Federal Communications Commission requirements in terms of how much we charge for cable and different groups that are wishing to use our poles.
Attached to the poles.
Attached to our poles. One of the things that they've said is that the challenges with broadband is that they don't... Is that municipalities and cities are charging too much. And from what research and study has gone into that, it's quite the opposite. It's that that really is not the barrier to getting broadband in more rural parts or in smaller cities. It's other issues that are more challenging. So, they do a great service for us, and our participation with them is good because we don't have the resources to be out there advocating a lot for our systems.
Okay. Any questions on those two items? Just gonna back up a little bit. A gentleman came in a little late. Did you intend to speak to the council? Did you want to address the council on something? We had about, you know, the part where if you want five minutes to address the council on a topic?
No, I was just gonna hear on the process so far of Martha and Ryan.
Okay, okay. That'll come up later in the agenda. All right, we'll move on to Item 10, Resolutions. First resolution is Resolution 16-2019, calling for an amended hearing for the assessment hearing, I'm sorry, for the 2019 street project.
Are we skipping over?
Oh, did I skip over some? Kirby.
Kirby.
Kirby, I did. I didn't mean to do that.
You're welcome, Kirby.
I saw you back there, but I...
Kirby would've been crushed if he didn't get this opportunity to brag about the streets department.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. All right. Well, with the snow season all but done, knock on wood. Kind of wrapping that up, I'd like to just thank, on behalf of the city and myself personally, just the help from everybody involved. Hagenmiller and his crew, and Claire Grading and his crew, Mike Wimpson, and our part timers, Mark Weeman, Taylor Weber, and Lee Force here. Just wanna give them a thank you, because it was especially a tough year, and I thought we got through it pretty good. So, everything went pretty smooth, actually. With that, I'd like to report, keeping an eye on the snow at the Semstone. I know there was concern about the baseball field, possibly that backing up on the field, but so far, everything looks just fine. I don't see any issue there at all. In fact, they're out there playing today, so I...
It must be heading a different way.
Yeah, and there's kind of even a little, almost a natural berm right off of the pavement, right off of the concrete going into the field. That's... And it's been such a slow melt, I think that kind of helps, too, so... Everything looks to be working out well there. Yeah, the winter kind of took the toll on some of our equipment. I got the snow blower in St. Paul right now at McQueen Equipment. They're looking it over. There was a couple leaks on it. I'm waiting to hear back from them as to what that's gonna be for repair. I also had them take our sweeper in. That hasn't been in to have a tech professional look at it since we bought it in 2015. I just wanted them to get it... Give it a good look over and see if there's anything they find on that before we get going on our sweeping this spring. And our loader, I had a tech come down from... Our mechanic come down from Titan Machinery. We went over our loader as well, and there are some issues with that. I'm waiting... He... I think he faxed a quote at the end of the day today to the office, so I'll be looking at that tomorrow. So, that has some repairs coming, too. Also, with the winter, we found multiple smaller leaks in the PD roof and the ambulance roof. Last summer, Mike and I were able to kind of patch some of those, but more and more have been showing up. So, I had Voss Construction go up there. Two weeks ago, they were in town. They stopped up and just put a temporary fix in. But they're gonna... Talk with them today. Within the next couple of weeks, we'll meet up and take a look at that rooftop, because it's probably been a few decades at least since anything's been done up there, other than just light patch work here and there. And they thought, too, that it's probably... It might need some extensive maintenance done to it. So, we're gonna take a look at that and see if there's a plan for getting that repaired. Sign retroreflexivity. We had some stop signs and some yield signs to finish up for replacing, you know, to new signs. We got that done. I got trees ordered for our spring planting for the tree grant. Well, the school actually reached out to me. A classroom did, looking for volunteer help. So, it sounds like the school can help us with the spring planting again. And that should finish up our tree grant. Kind of an update on the streetlight project. I was able to get ahold of a sales manager for the manufacturer of the product lights themselves. And he helped me with the specifications of each light. There's kind of a lot of stuff you gotta sort through as the lumens and color temperature and stuff like that. And I think he's got us pretty much dialed in on what that needs to be. And really, I feel like we're ready... I think we're ready with the product that we want for replacing these streetlights, and we're probably ready to get RFP out. He recommended, too, I... When I asked about how we should go about purchasing these, he recommends to cities to buy it straight from the company, however you want to view that, I guess. But he said that way you avoid sales tax getting passed on through the contractor, if you have the contractor buy the lights. Something to consider, I suppose. What else? I guess looking forward, spring work. I got Litsaw coming this week. We got a couple repairs to do. One is the sinkhole by Catch Basin. We're by Tom Hattlestead's house. And there's another one at Frenzel Park that a water drainage is exposed where it's... Where I think the pipe came apart. So, he'll be hopefully fixing those this week yet. Other than that, we got street sweeping, cold patching, alley grading, park maintenance. Got some street sign posts to get pounded back in that got run over this winter. And there's always tree work to be done, so... And there's always tree work to be done, so. Trying to cram a lot in yet this spring. Hope the roads are really wet yet, so we're kinda waiting on warmer temps and drier conditions to get a lot of the cold patching done.
Any questions for Kirby?
Kirby, you had mentioned that you've got a class or some students who are interested in doing some trees.
Yeah.
April twenty sixth is Arbor Day.
Okay.
I don't know, any thoughts on doing, typically we have a Arbor Day type celebration. I don't know what your thoughts are this year, it's coming up quick, obviously just getting ready, so.
Right, um, yeah, I, I, there is no date set for sure.
Okay.
I should be able to get the trees by then if we wanna try for that.
Okay.
And I think the closer out from finals and stuff at school is the better anyways. So the kids can squeeze it in.
I think we've sort of, I mean, we know when Arbor Day is nationally, but we've sort of set our own depending on.
We did our own, okay. Well, we do want nice weather and stuff. I, I was, I guess initially thinking early, early to mid May.
Early to mid May, okay.
Is, is kind of what I just told the teacher tentatively.
Alright, anything else?
Did you wanna talk a little bit about summer help, Kirby?
Yeah, I should, yes, I do, uh. So, we have uh, two of our candidates back from last year, which worked really well. And another one who would be great as well. Wondering if it'd be possible to get to hire on, to have three summer help. And one of the guys would almost be part, part-time help.
Part, part-time?
Part, part-time, uh, and he could start in the spring before the college kids are here and. And then, of course, in the fall, we always need somebody anyways. And then he's there for, if people go on vacations or anything like that to fill in. Being it might, it, it's a construction year with the street projects. Uh, I learned from the past that keeps me running quite a bit. Um, and it'd be another hand for Mike if he has to do chipping or even for me, if Mike's gone, it, it would be. Awesome to be able to have. Have three uh, people that could help out part-time.
Would it be filling in when the, the second person isn't there, whatever, so it's not really creating a new position?
There can be that, there can, there can be that. I also like, like to use uh, a part-time, like when we're sweeping, uh, to, to sit in our dump truck. That cuts my time, that cuts the whole time in half from me having to jump out of the truck and then drive over to the dump and dump the leaves. And I hate to throw Mike in there at his wage and he can keep on other things too. Um, or vice versa, if Mike's in the sweeper, then I can be out tackling other priority stuff. It's nice to have a part-time guy who, who can help us with that. Um, and there's odd, a lot of odds and ends that. I don't have written down or anything, but, and there's painting in parks, there's. Uh, I mean, I realize we can do all that too, but uh, there's just, there's a lot that, the way this winter went and. Kinda now having to cram a lot in and it's just. I, I, it would be a good way, I think, to problem solve the lack of help.
Maybe a thought for the council is perhaps bring this to the Employee Relations Committee. Cause I think we'll try and schedule a meeting probably next week uh, to talk about other issues as well. This might be a good time and maybe at that time Kirby will have a better idea of, you know.
Well.
What the financial.
Yeah, right, and ultimately that's what it is, is what's the budget look like, but. I mean, it would maybe run an extra couple grand on a part-time budget, I'm thinking. I mean, it's nothing exorbitant, nothing crazy. Having that extra hand would be amazing.
We've talked about that for a few years about if you need summer help and, you know, marrying a third person. And if you could get somebody for a couple thousand to do a lot of the same stuff, I think that'd be, I think it'd be good. Could make it work.
Yeah, would, uh, to cover vacations, um, or sick days? Two guys sometimes just isn't enough.
Okay, well, maybe the committee could work with that.
That's something I called Pat on today and just brought it up to him, I know we're not, I mean, it's not a final decision yet, but. Trying to brainstorm on it, I got three really good candidates for it, so.
Okay. Anything else for Kirby? Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now we'll go down to resolution sixteen dash twenty nineteen. Resolution calling for an assessment hearing for the twenty nineteen street and utility improvement project.
Council members, this is a r- resolution that's just uh, setting uh, the date and the time. Uh, which is proposed for May sixth, so that would be a, a Monday evening. Typically, we meet at six thirty, uh, not knowing how many people may be attending that public hearing. Uh, I thought that maybe we'd wanna push it up to six o'clock. Uh, if that poses a conflict for anybody, we can certainly keep it at, at six thirty, but uh. Uh, I thought that might be a good way to conduct that uh, public hearing and then jump into our council meeting uh, following that, so. We did just today receive uh, uh, some quotes and so we'll have that information prepared and uh. We can take a look at what those numbers are. And how that impacts current residents in Arlington.
So this again is just to move ahead with scheduling the um, assessment hearing. Um, keep in mind that uh, you know, at any, any point here, if something is, is looking like it's. Not gonna fit in with the city's plans or the budgetary demands, uh, we can just stop at that point. So, the assessment hearing is, is just a way to bring people in and get their feelings based on the, what, you know, what their individual costs are gonna be for it. Um, I personally haven't heard any negatives about it as far as the need for it, for the project. But um, now we're, we will put in front of the people the individual costs for their piece of property that might be along Clinton.
I'll introduce resolution twenty, or sixteen dash twenty nineteen, calling for an assessment hearing for the twenty nineteen street utility improvements.
Second. Resolution sixteen dash twenty nineteen was introduced by Councilmember Batch, or second by Councilmember Cowell. And that is a resolution calling for an assessment hearing for the twenty nineteen street and utility improvements. Is there any further discussion? And that would be on six o'clock on May sixth. Hearing none, we will vote by rule call, Councilmember Batch.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Four voting yes. No, no, no votes and one member absent, resolution is adopted. Moving on to resolution seventeen dash twenty nineteen, approve or deny gambling permit for Sibley County Fair Agricultural Association. For purse bingo Friday, May seventeenth, twenty nineteen.
The Sibley County Fair would like to uh, uh, go ahead and, and raise some funds through the purse bingo event that they are planning. Uh, what they would do is they would use funds from this to help pay for the cost of a nine eleven exhibit, which they're scheduling at the fair this year. Uh, because this is the one hundred and fiftieth annual fair, they wanna do something a, a little more significant. And that's where this came about, uh, because it is a more significant event, it does carry with it a higher cost. And so they feel that this event would be appropriate in helping them to offset some of those costs. So that's a request that's coming from Dennis Van Morleheim, who is the Sibley County Fair uh, board member. So by approving this uh, resolution, you would be allowing them to go ahead and raise some funds for that purpose.
I'd like to recommend that we approve resolution, resolution, boy, my mouth isn't working. Resolution seventeen twenty nineteen, a resolution approving the application for lawful gambling permit for the Sibley County Agriculture Association.
Second.
Councilmember Highland, they introduced resolution seventeen dash twenty nineteen, it was seconded by Councilmember Batch. Resolution seventeen dash twenty nineteen is a resolution approving the application for a lawful gambling permit for the Sibley County Agricultural Association. And it's to be held on May seventeenth, twenty nineteen. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by rule call, Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Batch.
Yes.
Four voting in favor, none against, and one absent, the resolution passes. Moving on to unfinished business, approve or deny quote received for carpet purchase and installation at the Arlington Library?
Council members, uh, included in your packet were two quotes for carpet replacement at the library. The first quote from Bergman Interiors LLC out of Glento was for a grand total of seven thousand seven hundred and fifty. The second quote is from Matt's Flooring in, located in Arlington. The cost, they're seven thousand seven hundred dollars. Uh, one of the items that we did as part of this uh, request for bids was to ask the individuals to include. Uh, several references in both uh, Bergman Interiors as well as hats. Were, Matt, I'm sorry, Matt's, were very receptive to that and provided us with, with references. Uh, included on the table in front of you is a listing of several questions that were posed to those references. Uh, as you can see, uh, one page was Matt's Flooring, the second page, or another page is Bergman Interiors LLC. Uh, based on that, the uh, library committee did have a, an opportunity to take a look and review this information. Uh, three of those committee members have made a recommendation to proceed with Bergman Interiors LLC. And if you have any questions, Kathy is here in the audience as well as Jeff Matts.
Okay, open for discussion.
So the bid from Matt's Flooring is less than um, Bergman Interiors? So I guess I'm just curious on why, I mean, it's not much more, but why the committee would go ahead and wanna go with Bergman rather than um, Aaron Edgar? Construction is just, you can't.
I'm sorry, repeat the question.
I, I'm wondering why, did I not, did I do it right, that the committee wanted to go with Bergman?
Correct, Bergman Interiors.
Okay.
We've been working with Bergman since August last year of the project. And um, based on conversations that we've had as the library committee. And then, and speaking to others about um, service in both places. Uh, it was just a decision that had been made.
When you say you've been working with Bergman since last year, what, to what degree? I mean, it's just carpeting needs to be torn out and replaced, what?
Well, we went, we originally made the contact with them.
Okay.
And it was under my understanding that we could go ahead and do this because it was budgeted for. And when I looked up the guidelines on the league of Minnesota cities, it looked like we were within our rights just to go ahead and look at that. And come back to the city with the recommendation, not realizing that the city had another document with guidelines that I was not aware of. And then um, I had a back injury and everything was put on hold. And so now we just reopened this again and have been exploring it again, so.
And as you may recall, this was brought up uh, at a previous council meeting. Uh, at that time, uh, there was, uh, uh, we didn't have the two quotes and so we went back out and looked for another one. That was probably my fault for allowing it to come forward, so. This was kind of our attempt to. To address that situation, to make sure that we get two quotes.
Well, I think it's fair that we have multiple quotes coming in for jobs that we're trying to complete. That's the fair way to do it and typically, I think, usually we, we go with the lower bid if the work that that company has done has been. Uh, satisfactory or, or better than satisfactory.
May I ask you?
Yes.
Could you repeat the quotes again?
Could you please use the microphone? I got these plugs in my ears and I can't hear.
I believe I heard you say that Bergman was, was cheaper than the Matt's Flooring.
No, opposite. Seventy seven fifty, right?
Yeah.
Just fifty dollars.
Fifty, fifty dollar difference. The uh, Matt's Flooring is fifty dollars less than Bergman Interiors for the, what we believe is the same work.
So I have a question, I guess for Ross, I mean, in our policy, it's the lowest reasonable, I mean, what?
That's correct.
I mean, um.
Under the law, you can reject the lowest bid if it's not a responsible bid. Meaning that the city has some reason to believe that the uh, low bidder cannot perform the project in a timely fashion or in a efficient fashion. I guess a extreme example of that would be somebody that bids on a multimillion dollar project. And they don't actually have a crew or any equipment or any experience, uh, you know, a startup. So they would be considered probably not a responsible bidder. And in cases like that, uh, it is appropriate to reject the low bid. But absent any concern about uh, that type of issue, uh, the low bid should normally be accepted.
I guess our low bid is, is um, here in town or whatever too. I got, I, I'd like to make a motion to approve uh, uh, Matt's Flooring for the installation of the Arlington Library Carpet. Uh, seventy seven hundred dollars.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion has been made by Councilmember Batch, or second by Councilmember Yashewski to approve the quote received. Uh, for carpet purchase and installation at the Arlington Library and that would be the low bid uh, submitted by Matt's Flooring. Further discussion?
I guess I'd just like to kind of express a little bit of disappointment with the way it was all handled a- as well. Just from when the night it was tabled, to having somebody there the next morning, you know, immediately before the library was even notified. That um, that it was tabled. But, I mean, the policies are the policies, we don't wanna, you know, we don't wanna drag this out anymore. Needs to get done.
Additional comments? Hearing none, we'll call the vote, all in favor of accepting the bid of Matt's Flooring and bid price of seventy seven hundred dollars. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? I'm not sure how many voted aye, do we have some not voting? All in fa- all in, all in favor, raise your hand, please. And opposed, raise your hand, and you're abstaining, okay. Three votes in favor, none opposed, one abstention, one absent. The motion passed. The motion passes. You're welcome. Move on to new business. Approve or deny authorizing nine thousand dollars from annual state police aid to be designated into CIP for future squad replacement.
Councilmembers, this is following up to a previous discussion, I don't recall exactly, I think it was while we were looking at purchasing a, the squad for law enforcement that we had some discussion about. It sure would be nice if we could set aside money and, and when it comes up time to get a new vehicle that we had some funds set aside that we could tap into versus having to go into the capital improvement plan. And so I did take a look at what we have set up. The police state aid from the Minnesota Department of Revenue is based, is based on the number of officers that you have. You have to have a minimum of six months working experience with this, with the city prior to, but then they give you credit looking at where the city of Arlington has been in the past. In two thousand sixteen, we received twenty one thousand three hundred and sixty one dollars. In two thousand seventeen, we received twenty three thousand seven hundred and ninety, ninety two dollars. And now in two thousand eighteen, we received seven thousand two hundred and fifty. It's quite a drop in two thousand eighteen, and I'm wondering if maybe that's worth going back and just verifying that the numbers were correct. But nonetheless, I still think that what you're looking to do is just take some money out of there and what we would do is we would put it into our capital improvement plan each year so that each year you could track how much money is available to invest in a future squad car. My recommendation is that we start out with that dollar amount being nine thousand dollars. I think that we're gonna see a significant increase from our two thousand eighteen allocation as we now will be up to four, including the chief in our police department. So nine thousand, if you estimate that a car is probably about five years before it has, four to five years before it has to get replaced, that would give you about forty five thousand dollars that you could tap into. And then any excess from that goes into the police department to help fill their budgetary needs. So, open any other suggestions that you may have, if you want that amount higher or lower than nine thousand.
Well, we replaced a couple of police vehicles almost back to back within a couple of years, so throwing at least some, at least using this money that it's coming from state aid going back into the police department is, I think, a good move. And earmark, mark the money for, for a, for a squad, I think is good too. We're not scrambling to try.
Going to, not going to earmark for a squad?
No, I think earmarking a squad is a good idea as well. You know, I mean, for now, I mean, I, I'm fine with the dollar amount or whatever, we can look and see where we're gonna be sitting and maybe we wanna earmark more. You know, we replaced two cars close within one another, so they're kinda on a, the schedule's tight now. So we either gotta make one last or, you know what I mean?
Especially when the one we just bought is older than the one we.
Right, had.
Had.
Yeah, right. So, um, that's how I feel about it. I'll appro, go ahead. Are you gonna make a motion?
Go for it.
I'd like to approve authorizing nine thousand dollars from the annual state police aid to be designated into a CIP for future squad replacement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by councilmember Batchery, second by councilmember Cowell to approve the authorization nine thousand dollars from the annual state police aid to be designated into the CIP for future squad replacement. Further questions? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carried. Item thirteen, approve or deny rental code framework and refer to planning committee for further work, conduct any public hearing.
Councilmembers, this is a, some information that was provided by Cynthia Smith Strack regarding the rental code framework. She has been working with the planning and zoning committee to put this information together and is ready to take the next step if you direct her to do so. So she's asking for you at this time to have some discussion about the framework and determine whether or not you would like the planning committee to proceed with putting together an actual amendment as well as holding a public hearing to take more input before it comes to the city council for final approval.
So I've been working on this, we've been working on this in the planning and zoning for a year and a half or better, ever since the group came back from Kentucky with their recommendations. So that's kind of what sparked us, looking into this. The first meeting that we had with property owners, landlords in town, nobody wanted it. They were very vocal. We went back and did some work and kinda chopped it down quite a bit. Had another meeting with property owners again, a month or two ago. Again, same response, they don't see the need for it, they don't want it. There's gonna be costs associated with it that they'll put on to their renters, which are already tapped, as they say, or whatever. Struggling just to hit the, hit the rent that they have set right now. They feel like it's already state regulated, so why do we have to impose more regulations on top of that? That's what I, and that's what I've heard. And that's meeting-ish and outside of meeting, other people, that's, that's what I've gotten.
And I, I guess ultimately, the whole reason this started was the medical school. And I think we're maybe jumping the gun a little bit. You know, I mean, there's not like, there's gonna be tons of people moving in rental properties immediately. There's no rental properties to begin with, you know? I don't think we've had any complaints about any of the current renters.
There, well, there was one complaint, I think, that there was infestation or something that got brought up to the county and that was probably about two years ago. But that was like one.
Right.
And.
So I mean, I think, for me, it feels like we're putting regulations on something for the future that we don't know if it's gonna be here or when it's gonna be here.
To me, it feels like we're trying to fix something that isn't broke yet. A lot of the proposals or things in the letter are just almost common sense things. I think a landlord would, would wanna do unless they have, they're slum lords and just let the place run down to nothing. And I would think that the renters would move out and nobody would move in.
I think they have, there's a, a book, right, from the state, renter, what are they, their rights?
Tenants' rights.
Tenants' rights. So they have an avenue to go. It's not to the city of Arlington, but it's to the state, right?
Right. I guess I'm not familiar with the state regulations, you know, Ross, are they similar to what we're talking here or?
Yes, to an extent, well, we have building codes and health regulations. And, you know, the local inspections can be triggered by complaints and those state regulations can then be imposed. I think, you know, I, I think I mentioned to the council that this subject has come up several times over the years. And in fact, I know at one point I provided the council with the rental rules for the city of Mankato and also the city of Winona, both college towns. And that's where I think, you know, rental regulations are particularly important. The classic concern being in a college town that you don't have homeowners worried about the animal house next door with the, you know, burned out sofa on the front lawn surrounded by beer cans, literally.
That sounds like a good time, when do we start?
I know, I know, yes. And, so whenever you have a college town environment, I think rental regulations need to be stricter on the local level. Whether we'll, going to your point, whether we'll be seeing Arlington as kind of a college town down the road? Maybe, maybe not. And if we perceive problems at that time, you know, we already have some framework, you know, we've got some homework we've done already. But if we had a problem with a rental property, do we currently have tools to address it? Yes, we do. And I guess my own perception has been, we've had a couple of properties that were probably not cared for very well by out of town landlords. And those properties have since come under ownership of local landlords and have been substantially improved. I'm also aware of a few properties that are not in good repair. Those are not rental properties, those are properties sold under contract for deed. And neither the owner nor the current occupant, you know, are taking very good care of them. But that situation wouldn't be addressed at all by, you know, rent, rental regulations.
But then come under if, if the, if the structure looked bad or the building looked bad, safety hazard, health.
Building code.
Building code type of thing.
Yes, yes.
You get the building inspector or the county involved and I would think there'd be an avenue for something like that.
Yes. And the city has taken that action with various properties over the years, including property that's sold under a contract or property that's owner occupied and not being taken care of properly. And in fact, I have a, a hearing in court this Thursday afternoon on such a situation.
Okay, well, the question again is, do we send it back to them to put an ordinance together or do we deny that move and just let it?
I think.
Let it be done?
I don't see a need for it. Anybody I've talked to said they don't want it. It would just make it more challenging for the tenants because they would pass on the, any fees that would be incurred. So I, I think at this time, we should wait and put, and put it aside for a while. Put it on a shelf.
You know, I had a rental house in Willcoa for a little while and the fee, rental fee was two hundred dollars for having a rental house, plus they had an inspector come out and go through the house and check all the outlets and make sure the doors open and close, and there's a lock on the bathroom and, and my house passed!
Well, it had to.
But, you know, the fifty dollar fee that we're talking about here, I don't think is a.
And that's fifty dollars for three years.
For three years.
For three years, not each year, but for three, covers three years, yeah, so it's.
I mean, I don't think that's a deal breaker. You know, if it's two hundred dollars a year, then I, I could, and I, I guess myself, having heard from some of the landlords and property owners and some of the citizens, I think I would like to put this on the shelf for at least a year until somebody builds an apartment building or we see an influx of homes that are turned into rental homes and, and the school gets opened up in Gaylord and we have an influx of people that need places to rent, then I think we should really take a look at it. You know, we've had one or two complaints that I know of in the five years I've been on the council. And I think those are taken care of by change of ownership and we have a local resident that seemed to take pride on what he's doing on Main Street and his other properties and, you know, that's, that's very encouraging. So he don't want any problems, I think the other landlords don't want problems, so it might be a self policing situation, for now.
If I may inject, I want to pick up on something you just mentioned, and that is if it becomes a college town environment, one issue that many communities face is turning single family homes into rental properties with multiple occupants. And that's addressed by zoning. And in fact, for example, Winona, that was a crucial issue that they addressed, that you had, you know, that's a multi-college town. And they were concerned of a trend where you'd have single family home, rental home, single family home, rental home. And they felt it was really depressing property values and there were parking congestion issues and noise issues, et cetera, et cetera. And the way that communities tend to address that is some kind of zoning regulation that says you can only have a ratio of so many rental homes per block, you know, something like that. But, you know, that's something the council, I guess, should keep in the back of its minds. If it ever appeared that, you know, we might be facing that kind of trend, then we maybe try to get ahead of it a little bit.
And I would think too, you could have probably handled it, but if you have a three bedroom home, you can only have X number of tenants in that. You know, if they all happen to be married, you're gonna have six people in that house.
Yes, and again, that would be.
Of course they're all married.
That would be a zoning provision.
Right. So that'd be six cars parked in the driveway, that would work either.
But touch on, to touch on your fee part, that was just something that was thrown out there, we don't know exactly how much it would be, so I mean, that would be something else too.
Let's make it two hundred dollars, that'll really make everybody.
How about I make a motion to deny the code, rental code framework to proceed to the planning commission?
Second.
Yeah, motion made, made by councilmember Batchery, second by councilmember Cowell. That would be to deny the rental code framework and refer to planning committee for further work. So we are halting that project at this time then, in effect.
Are you saying that they're going to continue working in that document?
No. We're denying that it would be referred back to the planning committee. We aren't approving it, it would be referred back to the planning committee. So they would not be working on it anymore.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Motion carried.
I would, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to maybe ask Administrator Melvin to flag his calendar in a year or eighteen months from now to maybe revisit the zone, the rental zoning to see what's happening in the world.
If a lot has changed or not, yeah.
You know, when we have those three fifty unit apartments buildings being up, built up and.
I don't think you'll have to flag it, I think we'll, we'll all notice that. We will all notice that. All right, item fourteen, councilmember committee updates, planning and zoning agenda for April fourth.
Included in your packet, councilmembers, is a copy of the Thursday, April fourth, planning and zoning committee agenda. So I believe what we're gonna be doing going forward is simply putting minutes, if we have them. If we don't have minutes, we'll be putting a, an agenda on the, into the packet just so that you can be better aware and informed about what's going on with on, within your committees. So you can see there, are there any questions on the, the agenda? that they have proposed for April 4th?
It sounds like they're going to start in very heavily looking at the CIP and as it relates to any potential industrial property identification. You know, they're gonna start looking at that. And that, that won't be, be a, you know, short term thing. It's gonna take a while for those items to be dealt with. Okay. Any other comments, questions on planning and zoning? Thursday night is the meeting, 7 o'clock. If not, move on to item B, Northland Drying update.
Just wanted to share with the council that based on our discussion I did hear from Josh Howell, Joshua Hall at Northland Drying, he said that everything that the silencer has been ordered, that they just this last week were pouring a concrete base to hopefully quiet the rattling that's coming off the motor that's located outside. And that everything is continuing basically as, as planned. So. Again, Northland Drying will be providing us with bi-weekly updates in terms of progress. They have a deadline date of May 4th, at which time they have to have the noise issue resolved. They have to have somebody, ESI engineers who we had out here to conduct the testing. They have to have them back out here to provide us with a report confirming that they are within the acceptable noise range, which they currently are not. So.
Is it specifically ESI or is it a reputable company that does the same thing?
Specifically ESI is what we, in our letter to them stated.
Yeah.
Yes.
Measuring with the same equipment. Yeah.
If it's not resolved by May 4th, we left ourselves several options. Possibly removing their conditional use permit, which allows them to have those storage containers located outside the building. Second one was to pursue some misdemeanor charges. And the third one was to restrict their hours of operation. So we have those three options, which they are well aware of, the fact that we could use those if things aren't addressed by May 4th.
I'm, I'm sure we're all disappointed in their, their word not being good. But it makes sense saying it that way. They said that there should be no noise, there should be no smell. They'll take care of anything that comes up immediate, immediately and it's not been very immediate.
There, there's been some disagreement as to, you know, what was said at the beginning before they came to town. They believe that they did say that there, if anything is problematic, that it would be possibly the noise and the smell. But obviously now we are finding out that it's very problematic, the noise. So.
Looking forward to the next update.
Yes.
May I ask a question?
Yes. Let's just state your name, please, and for the record.
My name's Todd Mayer. I live at 120 Henderson Road, right next to the trailer. You know those trailers there? You know, I've been pretty, you know, open with it, laid back, you know. I'm all for them being here. I mean, I, I think it's great. You know, as far as the hours of operation, you know, since they're above the noise range, isn't there, you know, a request to, to shut down at, you know, the noise time? Is it 10 or 11 o'clock during the week or and they come in and then start working again at 6:00 AM?
I think that was, that is the one, one that's, when, if we need to go in and put some clamps on their hours of operation that was mentioned as a timeframe.
Sure. I mean, as far as like, say, the summertime now, if I have a rock band in my backyard and I haven't turned out by a certain time because they're too loud. Same rules and effects should apply, I would assume, right?
Okay, I hear you. Yep.
I mean, that's just what I'm asking. It's just, you know, because if they're doing it, then I should be able to do, you know, a concert as long as I might have, you know, the people. So it's just kind of the, same rule should apply for everybody then. You know, I'm sure this is brought up before, you know, but I'm just kind of, just been waiting to see how it plays out. Pretty patient with it, but, you know, not upset or anything. I'm just wondering why, you know, the rules aren't applied for the same for them as in me. I'm right next door. So, you know, I'm sure I'd get in trouble if I had a rock band in my backyard. Everyone wants to listen to that music. So.
Oh, sure.
You know, I mean, if it was a country singer, maybe, you know. It's just one of those things where the rules should apply for everybody.
Okay.
So that's just what I was asking.
Yeah. Point taken. Thank you.
Part of the challenge, I think, Todd, was, you know, initially, initially Northland Drying, you know, didn't know that they were in violation or that, that, that's what they informed us. We, the city, you know, went ahead and, and conducted the, the testing and went above and beyond in trying to, you know, wanting to welcome them to the community, but also wanting them to recognize that, you know, we don't want this to be a negative influence on residents. And so we got the testing here, we got the testing done, and we've been pushing them ever since to get that taken care of. And I know for a lot of residents, it's, it hasn't been happening since was it Jan- February, I think, is when we finally got the testing done and got it, it resolved. But I know for a lot of residents, it's been going since they first got here. It didn't start just in February.
Right.
So that has been, I think, a, a real challenge is realizing how long residents have had to put up with it and it's taken a while for the city to realize that this really isn't a problem and get the testing done. And so now my hope is that we're on the, we're on the clear path and that this summer you shouldn't have any problems with noise. There should be a silencer. It should be a lot quieter in that area. So.
With, with Northland Drying being on a industrial job site, does that change the noise levels as opposed to residential?
They have to adhere to the adjoining residential.
They have to adhere to the adjoining residential.
Yeah.
And that I think was part of the initial.
No lock band in your backyard. Yeah?
That I think was part of the initial misunderstanding was the thought that they simply had to meet the, the industrial noise limits. But no, because they do abut to the residential at that border, they need to meet the residential noise limits. So there's a little bit of learning involved for everybody there on the front end.
And I think that, you know, I, I have no qualms about saying they should have checked that a little closer. They, you know, once they knew that there was some noise involved, actually, once they planned where they were gonna be located and knowing it was right next to a residential, they should have been aware of, of the city's noise regulations and then the state statutes also.
Todd, if you'd like to leave me like an email or something, we've got kind of a list of individuals that we're keeping individuals updated in terms of.
My wife's already on that. She, she sees everybody else responding. We're not gonna add any people. So.
Okay, okay, okay.
What's a definite concern of ours that we get this taken care of is but it unfortunately, you have to figure out the problem and what's causing it, then you're gonna have to manufacture something to silence the, the noise and, and it doesn't happen overnight.
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's, that's why I'm here is because I know it's been a few months, so I just wanna, I see where things are going. So.
Yeah, we, we all want, want it to get better. That's for sure. Okay. Any other comments on Northland Drying? We'll move on then to the historical society update.
Included in your packet was a set of the minutes of the looks like the March 4th meeting. Are there any questions or anything? They talked a little bit about some different grants that they're gonna be pursuing to pay for the lighting project, which they've done. Talked about some of the 2019 exhibits, which include thrashing, some museum guidelines, as it looks like they've got a large group of people who are willing to provide guided tours. They're gonna be putting together some information. And a genealogy program that they're working on. So they're doing some good work. So.
Now, is that, that building a city owned? The entry, entry door is shot. The entry door, the whole corner is rotted out.
Oh, is it?
Yep, the main entrance door. Is that, is that building on the historical registry or not?
I don't think it is.
Hopefully it's not because then we have a little more latitude with making.
I have the idea they were thinking of applying, but
Okay.
I, I don't think they thought they.
I don't recall seeing a plaque or anything on the wall. They always.
No, no.
But that, that definitely should be looked into. It's something that, it looks pretty tough. I mean, it's not a good welcome in type thing.
So do you want the, do you want the city to look at replacing that door?
Well, I would, you know, I mean, it's just normal maintenance on a, on a building that really is in, you know, plain view of, of people that are on Main Street. I think we should have a little more. And I, I know Dwight knows about it. We talked about it a little already, but I think they just haven't, haven't approached us yet on it. All right. Open discussion, I guess. Any response to Mr. Brinkman's comments about the street project and?
I think we should reach out to Jason, see if we can get a answers to why the sidewalk was moved. There's, probably has to be a logical explanation.
Yeah, I would like to hear that again too. I know I did hear from Jason. I think not only I did, but, but the reason it was moved was because of trees. So I wanna see if he can expand on that a little bit or.
I mean, if there's a, a need for a sidewalk or if that's just the policy that there's a sidewalk or, you know, what the, I guess the reason behind that too. You know, if there wasn't a sidewalk there and now you're putting one there, you know, I guess.
There is sidewalk, I think, on both sides of the street, down further.
For, yeah, I'm just.
Like on the, on the west end of that, on, on that street. But I know doing other projects, we, you know, wanna do it on one side of the street, not both sides of the street.
It's part of kind of a healthy, safe community, getting more people out walking, but also giving them a place where they can do so safely, free of traffic and different things.
But since there's a second, there are two sidewalks down farther. How does that affect, you know, should we put in two sidewalks? And which side is decided upon? What, what's a factor for?
My, my assumption is that at one time, yeah, there was put in on both sides, but going forward, because of the cost of putting sidewalks in, if you have a sidewalk on one side, there's no need to incur that additional expense to put it in on the other side. And so going forward with all new construction that will probably, new street construction that will do in the city, that will put it on one side. And if there's a side that already has an existing sidewalk, we'll try and figure out which side is better suited. And it doesn't necessarily always have to be the south side. It just has to be one side.
One or the other.
I'd like to hear from Jason too. I think that'd be good. I'd like to hear from Jason too. I think that'd be good. Reason behind it. I know the south side of that road, right across from the mayor's house, there's like a steep, steep grade there, like four foot steep grade. So I don't know, the elevation of that road, I don't think is gonna change too terribly much.
If they shore it up to straight.
I think, but see, that's the other thing. Yeah, they're gonna bring it in. So no matter where the existing sidewalk is, that's gonna be torn up and is probably gonna be yard for both sides.
And if Jason could give us a estimate per foot of sidewalk, so on the area where the sidewalk is just on the south side, what would it cost to put it in on the north side in addition to that? I mean.
Wasn't.
Now, this was all bid already. This project was bid. It's too bad we aren't coming out with these things before the bidding process. Just saying.
Well, I mean, I, I can't see adding sidewalk to both sides of the street. I mean, I don't think that's a thing. But I, I mean, just figure out what side of the street it's gonna be on. I mean, if, at that meeting that we were at, that, the public meeting, if it was presented to be on the north side and now it's switched to the, well, I mean, I'm just saying.
But I'm just saying what it was at that meeting was presented to be on the south side. Yes.
So there's two different maps that came out. So I can see, I can see how, if he didn't go to the meeting, he didn't get an updated map. Everybody on the south side didn't get an updated map unless they were at that meeting. So there, there's confusion there. But it'd be nice to hear from Jason.
I did take a packet, our neighbors across the street, I did take a packet from that open house. They sent it down to them. And I put a note in there that you're getting a sidewalk. So they knew it. They knew it when they were down in Arizona back in January, February, whenever, shortly after that period. They didn't like it, but they knew it.
Well, the good thing is, is it's not gonna be assessed to the property owners, what, no matter what side the, the sidewalk goes on. The only thing that's gonna be moving forward is the maintenance on the sidewalk, the shoveling of the snow and stuff like that. So.
I had a gentleman visit with me last week, individual who lives over in High Island Creek.
Yes.
In that area and.
Is where? I'm sorry?
High Island Creek.
Okay.
Over just south of where the new Semstone site is.
Okay.
He doesn't live in the cul-de-sac, but he's the, the, the second house in. And I'm pretty sure his name is Todd Mayer. So I don't know if.
No, that's not me. I'm on the other side of the park.
Okay, okay. So there's somebody else who's.
Todd's a nurse of a coin.
Maybe it's Meyer versus Mayer or something like that. Is it Todd Meyer? Okay. And so he spoke with me and he had concerns. Right now, the creek has obviously overflowed quite a bit. And if you look in those backyards, there's a lot of water. What his issue was, was that he had concerns that the the drain off from the agricultural fields there are coming across the road and going down into that area. And I believe it's the Vassas who I brought up before are that first house. They have concerns because they have young children. They've got a playset in the back and that playset in the back oftentimes, I don't think the flooding is quite up there, but it's very close to there. So.
Right at it. I drove past there today.
It's about three feet underwater right now.
It is. Okay, okay.
Not their swing set. Oh, okay. Then I was looking.
Water is up there quite a ways. Well, it was a couple days ago.
But, but his real, his real concern again was that the, the chemicals and the different things from the farm field were drain, coming across the road, draining into the backyards, creating what he believed was a, a real hazard. So I spoke with him and I told him that I would bring it up to the council. And I will reach out to Kirby and just ask Kirby to kind of keep an eye to see really how much water's coming off of those fields, draining into that backyard. There's a lot of water there now, but how much of that is from the creek and how much is from the agricultural land? I don't know.
Just, I mean, is there, even if we wanted to, is there anything we can really do? I mean, you can't.
It's flooding this spring. What are you doing?
Well, I know, but even though it's like, it's kind of like Gaylord 10th Street. You know, I mean, all the, it's been that way for years. All that water comes from the fields and I don't, not that we don't want it.
It's gotta go the natural way, you know?
Right.
The, the field drainage, I know there's a tile goes through there from the, the field east of those homes, but that tile is underground all the way to the creek. It doesn't dump out anywhere on top of the ground. So once it gets to the creek now, is it part of the floodwater? Sure it is. It's just the nature of the spring. It, it's just the nature of the spring.
Well, and so are the, uh, runoffs from five hundred farms upstream.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
It's the whole watershed.
Okay, anything else that we need to discuss?
Just wanted to again remind you all that on, uh, tomorrow night, we have a meeting with the Sibley County Municipality. That'll be at the Henderson Roadhouse at six o'clock, I think a number of you are, are attending. Um, and then on April ninth, the ambulance meeting, training with fire department. And then on April twelfth, uh, at this time, I'm talking with, uh, Green Isle and seeing if they would be receptive to having the Arlington-Green Isle Wastewater Committee get together. I know that Michelle, you and I have talked about that numerous times.
Yes.
Uh, it's been a long time since they've had a meeting.
Years, I think.
Years.
Years since the meeting.
So, it, my, my thought is, we've got it on the, uh, calendar to go ahead and, at the very least. April twelfth.
Eleventh, eleventh on here.
Is it April?
Uh, the eleventh is a Thursday.
Oh, okay, yeah, then it must, I must be off the day.
Eleventh.
Don't think it'll be on Friday, uh, so we'll get an agenda out, I'm waiting to hear back from Green Isle. We're currently in the process of repairing a meter which monitors the flow of wastewater coming from Green Isle. At this meeting, the hope is to kinda review the current agreement that we have and just find out who are the members from Green Isle, who are the ones from Arlington. My hope is that then in maybe three to four months, we can have another meeting. At that time, we would have the, uh, the measurements in terms of how much, uh, sewer water is coming from Green Isle. And it's been a significant period of time since we've taken a look at that to see what those rates are and maybe it justifies making some adjustments.
Where is the meeting at? Here?
Um.
Or you can let me know.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on that, I just need Green Isle to confirm that they're able and then we'll talk about location.
Perfect.
So, we'll get that scheduled tomorrow.
That's good to know.
So.
I'd like to go back to the, uh, ambulance and fire department training session for extracting someone out of a vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
And I'd like to volunteer.
To be extracted.
Ben Jacevsky to be the person in the car that they're extracting. Everybody in favor?
Only if Ben smiles.
Absolutely.
As it's happening.
Okay.
They've had, they've had other like emergency drills where they've had community members be the victims and such, and I mean, it is quite, quite amazing how they can control a scene and take care of all those people. They do an awesome job.
We're asking to be there to be spectators?
Correct, be spectators.
Yep.
Interact with the fire and the ambulance EMTs, yeah. You know, one of the things that we have had some discussion about is, is participating in the ambulance meetings because they have switched, so it doesn't conflict with, uh, city council meetings. So, this might be a good way to gradually start to build that relationship back up.
Hmm.
So.
Okay.
I think we've got a good ambulance manager in Sarah Burton who's got some good ideas. Uh, in addition to that, we're also talking about, because this will be the fiftieth year for the EMTs, uh, Rich and a few others are on a committee to start talking about, is there something that we can do to show our appreciation for the work that they do at, you know, two dollars an hour to be on call and responds to various emergencies? So, we're working on that, planning something.
Okay, before we adjourn, I know all of you wanna get going, but we save the worst news till last. That is, the bids came in this morning on the street project and, uh, there were two bids, one from William Miller in the amount of two million, four hundred forty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-six cents. The other bid was from Ryan Contracting, two million, six hundred and forty-four dollars, five hundred and twenty-six, two million, six hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars.
What was the first one?
Two million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-six cents. So, the bids were approximately twenty percent over engineer's estimate. Um, one surprise that we found out about this morning is that, uh, Charred, within the last two or three weeks, has gone out of business, out of, uh, uh, underground. They're, they're going to be doing gravel hauling and asphalt and that type of thing, but no more, no more digging. So, um, we probably missed out on, you know, one competitive bidder there, but, um, so, um, the plan is to get together with Shannon and, and have Jason here at the same time at a workshop before the next meeting.
Correct, yep, on the fifteenth.
So that we can look at, number one, is it, is it at all affordable even at this price? And then, of course, if you have some questions about the project, that'd be the time to, we went through a number of things this morning and, you know, there's just no way to say, well, let's do half of it now and half the next year, half now and half two years from now. Cause you're putting half of it in and you still aren't getting the, the, uh, the flooding issue taken care of, so, um.
What, what does that do to the resolution that we just passed then earlier today, as far as that? Getting an assessment hearing and stuff like that.
Still gonna have it.
But that.
Even, e- even if we were, Jason recommends, we still have until that May sixth date to say no. He, Jason feels strongly that we should go forward, he can run the numbers quite easily and that we should have the, the public input before we make that decision. So, it was based on, in part on his recommendation that your date is May sixth. If you choose not to proceed, we should continue forward at this point, yeah.
So, what would have been the difference of getting those numbers together, having our meeting next week and then calling that resolution for, for the May sixth meeting? I, I feel like.
Probably just getting the resolution out there and advertise that it's gonna be held. You know, we, we haven't met with Shannon yet, we don't know what the affordability of the project is.
Right, but that, but you knew what came in the mail and how big of a change that was, so why wasn't that brought up when we talked about the resolution, I guess, I'm curious?
Because I guess we, even if, even if you would see this number, uh, Jason is still recommending wait until May fifth to make that decision. He wants, Jason first of all wants some time to go back and talk to the people and see if there's any way that this number can be, you know, squeezed down. Uh, we talked about a lot of options with him this morning, that how do you cut the project down? We talked a little bit about, you know, a lot of, what they bid was the concrete, uh, stormwater piping. He had included in the contract kind of a high strength polyplastic type.
It's more of a plastic pipe.
Which some people are using, he thought that would bring in some more competitive, uh, lower priced bids. Both of them ended up going ahead and, and bidding the concrete. The two things that really drove up the cost of this were the storm sewer and the street, both of those came, those were over two hundred thousand more.
Each of them were two hundred thousand more, yeah.
Well, I understand where, where, what your reasoning is, but I think that would have been pertinent information to share before we, you know, voted on a resolution or when we were talking about the project, uh, just for information and then stating what you stated so that we had all the information instead of bringing up, it up at the end of the meeting. I guess that's, I get where my frustration is, is why wasn't I told when you know and you have that piece of paper in front of you?
Yeah.
It should have been brought up here, not down here.
Mm-hmm, okay.
On the project, do they have to do the laterals going off of Clinton, you know, up the side?
Side streets.
Could they just run the storm sewer, sewer water down Clinton?
Because they're changing elevations and that affects the streets either way. If you come up, if you change the elevation of an intersection, it affects the streets in four, four different directions.
Can we teach water to run uphill?
Yeah. We knew that the project was gonna be a huge project and because there's no way to condense it going in.
Mm-hmm.
Cause typically what we, correct me if I'm wrong, typically when we go after product, projects, it's in that one point five to one point eight.
Yep.
Price, right, and so we knew going in that this was a little higher, well, now it's even higher than.
Yeah.
Higher than what we thought, what estimated. So, by going with the plastic pipe instead of the concrete, is that gonna bring it down, that?
Not a huge difference.
Nobody bid it.
Nobody bid it.
Nobody bid it, nobody wants to do it.
We had two, two bids.
I think there's some contractors out there that don't trust the plastic yet, they don't feel it's durable enough to put, to put down there.
Well, if you were to get down there when they're backfilling to see if it's caving in at all, I mean, would you? No.
No. No. So, that's what, the plan is to have a workshop before the next meeting and, uh, have Jason and, and Shannon there. And we can look at both the financial part of it and the actual construction and, and bid part of it.
What would that raise the individual's assessment, we don't know.
That's what they're gonna run, run that down.
Probably by twenty percent.
You think?
Guessing.
So, if they're at?
They're at ten thousand assessments.
Another two thousand.
That'll add a couple hundred bucks, right, two thousand?
Two thousand, what, twenty percent of?
Assessments typically pay for twenty-five percent of the project and the city pays for seventy-five percent. Now, that's excluding sidewalk, cause sidewalk comes out, we don't bond for sidewalk, sidewalk comes out of the hospital revenue, is that correct?
And it gets assessed back, I believe.
Not to the property.
Not to the property.
No, no, not at all.
Okay.
So, twenty-five percent of the twenty percent that it's going up. So, it'd be five hundred bucks on a ten thousand dollar assessment.
That ain't bad.
You're not, you don't live on that street, do you Jim?
I have been. Where's my calculator? Oh, it's over here.
I think I did the math right.
Yeah, that's right.
Thanks for us.
Okay, any other comments, questions, hearing non-emotion is in order to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by council member Batra, second by council member Cowell to adjourn the meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion is, my council is adjourned at eight fifteen, eight fifteen. See ya.
No, we got, we got in a, a funny guy on the other side of the creek, I actually drove out there today.
Yeah, I did too.
Yeah, that water's all coming out of the creek.
Well, that's what I thought when I was out there too.
And, and the, and the roadway is high enough that you're not getting surface.
There's no surface water going across.
No.
The only thing when you, when you mentioned that to me this morning before I went out there, I thought, well, maybe there's water coming down and, and the culvert underneath is still froze shut.
Yeah.
And then it could come over the top, but that's not happening.
Yeah. Now, is there a valid concern about, you know, health issues for, from farm runoff? Yes, but it's not something the city has any ability to address. And the people that bought out there all knew that that was a flood plain
Mm-hmm.
in their backyards.
Who was there first, the farm land or the homes?
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
I agree.